All right. Do that later. Okay, I think we're gonna get started with the special meeting of the Finance and Audit Committee. And I am going to, um, the members of the committee are myself as the committee chair, Nelson Esparza from District Three as the vice, uh, what is it? Se- oh, what did I say? Three? Yeah, Seven as Vice Chair, right? And Gary Brederfeld, District Six. Yeah, um, a non-executive position.
Hey, you're not, you're not gone from the council yet, Steve. We need you to, need you to hang in there.
And I don't know if we officially have to have a roll call, Doug. Do you know? Okay, good, good. So, we're convening this meeting, which is pretty rare for the Finance and Audit Committee, but there is something worth discussing, and that is the audit of parking services in the city of Fresno. A very disturbing audit for almost everybody that saw it. And so, one of our goals today is to determine, as a subcommittee, as a committee, what are our recommendations. But I would add that sometimes this committee meets to recommend whether it goes to full council or whether obligations have been met and we feel like it doesn't need to. In this case, it is already on the agenda for this Thursday's council meeting. So, although we're gonna hear it today, we definitely will hear parts of it, if not all of it, in front of the full council on Thursday. And so, that kind of relieves us of a little bit of determination today. But I still think it's valuable for us to get into the nuts and bolts, and it will probably better prepare us for Thursday. So, what I'd like to do is ask for, the way we're gonna do this today is ask for a quick presentation. And I don't know if, Wilma, if you wanna give that, or if Mike wants to?
Yeah, here's what we, and thank you, and we appreciate you convening to go over this audit. And I'm gonna actually disagree with you. I don't think it's a disturbing audit by any means. I think what we, the reason why I asked for this audit to be done was because our former parking manager was getting ready to retire. We were soliciting, you know, opening a position, if you will, for the new parking manager to fill that, right before Thomas came on board. I wanted the audit to be done because I thought it was a good opportunity to look at what systems, or lack thereof, we had in place with our parking division, to make sure that whenever the new parking manager came on board, he or she was completely equipped to see what deficiencies we had, to see areas that we could improve upon, and what we were doing well. And I, and I'm very pleased, actually, with the results of the audit, because we did have some suspicion that there were some systems issues, if you will. And this, to me, is a great opportunity to look at what we were doing right, what we were doing wrong, improve upon it, and Thomas is already making, making great strides at improving the parking division and programs in place. So, what we were hoping to do today is have Mike Lima and his team go over the audit. We have Thomas and his staff in the audience, should you have any questions. And then, we can talk about what we want to do for council on Thursday. Is that fair enough?
I agree. And disturbing only in the sense that we, this Finance and Audit Committee, we don't convene every time to go over every audit. We'd be convening every week. There's lots of audits. But this, the results of this audit showed enough information that warranted us having the special meeting. That's probably what, what I should've said then. So, Mike, if you'd like to begin to go over, and Mike, what I'm gonna, in this, a little bit separate from the way we run council meetings, I'm gonna have my colleagues here, we're gonna ask you questions as they come up, if that's okay?
It works for me.
That way, we can, yeah.
I'm gonna withhold mine till the end. I wanna speak to the auditors.
Your prerogative.
You got it.
Okay. Good afternoon, committee members. Mike Lima, Finance Director/Controller. It is a common business practice to perform an internal transitional review of a business unit in instances where the longtime manager of that unit has given notice of an impending retirement or resignation. Such a situation occurred in the parking unit last year with the retirement of the former parking manager. As the city manager indicated, in light of this impending resignation and the common practice, she requested a transitional review of the Parking Services Division. Leadership in DARM, where Parking Services is housed, cooperated fully during this review's performance. The time period of the review covered July 1st, 2016, to March 31st, 2018. As a result of the review, the internal auditors made five findings. One, Parking Services did not have standard operating procedures for monitoring parking facility usage by entities who had agreements with the city. Two, Parking Services was not able to perform proper financial oversight of parking revenue. Three, because of the first two findings, Parking Services did not collect as much revenue as it could've collected during the review period. Four, management-level approval was not needed to dismiss parking citations. And finally, adequate internal controls were not in place for the parking meter collection process. Due to the addition, due to the issues identified in these findings, internal audit staff estimated that $242,845 of revenue was lost during the 21 months of the transitional review evaluation period. These findings were communicated with the new Parking Services Manager and other in DARM management. As is standard practice with all internal audits, internal audit staff will conduct a follow-up audit in about six months to determine if the findings are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I think what I'd like to do now is go into a little bit more detail in each of the findings, okay?
Okay.
Um, you gave us the title of the findings, but what I'd like to do is, in each finding, talk about what information we discovered in this audit, what point, if any, led up to something that shouldn't have been happening, or something that should've been happening? What led up to that? And then, also, what the, what the solution is that you may or may not have already implemented. So, let's start with finding one.
Okay. Uh, finding one, Parking Services lacks standard operating procedures for monitoring parking facility usage by entities with whom the city had entered into parking agreements. Uh, if you look at, I assume all of you have a copy of the audit, uh, report? Uh, if you look at page four, under Table One, those are the parking agreements that we currently have in place. Um, and it lists the number of stalls that are contracted. In the case of the county, for instance, it comes out to about 600 stalls we have on three different garages. Um, but what internal audit found was that we had actually issued over 700 permits. If I remember right, 757, um, that were issued. Uh, and so, there were more permits issued than what the contract allowed. Um, a similar situation occurred with Club One. Club One, it says that they pay $6,000 a month for 100 validations, um, and that's, and then, that's per day. And then, they have to pay a dollar, uh, per validation for any parking that goes above those 100 per day. Um, what internal audit found was that there was about 98,000 validations that, um, that were given and that were above the limit that had already been set. So, those are a couple of examples of items that internal audit found, where basically, the contract language was not being followed by staff or not being monitored. And, uh, in terms of what has been done, I can, I don't know if you wanna bring Thomas up now, or do you?
Actually, I have a couple of questions about, you know, before we get to what's been done to address that, and I, I think that's good, and I think that's good that we're gonna hear that. But I think we need to know, because, you know, there's other, there's other places. So, what this makes me wonder is, do we have other type of problems going on in other departments of the city? So, what kind of problems lead up to allowing Fresno County to have 157 additional stalls and the, the problem that happened at Club One as well?
You know, um, I don't know that we actually went into what caused it. We could, we just noted that it was there. The condition was there. I do know that Parking Services, particularly in downtown, is a true balance between customer service and, uh, and following rules and regulations. And, uh, pure speculation, I'm going to say that the, uh, when in doubt, the former parking manager opted toward customer service and said, "We'll go down this area." Um, but I can't say for sure what the motivation was at this time.
You know, I think it might be important right now to answer that question. Thomas, do you mind talking to us or the committee about, um, Club One, for instance, and the stalls issue and, and why, why there are stalls that were being utilized above and beyond, and what we're doing now to correct that? Because I think his answer's going to basically answer your question about how moving forward's going to resolve this issue.
And, and first, if I can speak to that Fresno County one as well. So, Fresno County, their total number was 600 across those three facilities, and we showed that there was 757. And so, what you're looking at there is the number of access cards that are activated. And that may or may not mean that, again, speculating during that time when those cards were active, whether or not someone was using them. Because that would've been an instance where Fresno County reports to us their payment and the access cards or permits to be issued. So, that's a permit to issue for that month, or an access card that remains on for that month. The piece that was not happening was this nexus between Fresno County making payment and then reconciling the access cards to ensure that they remained on. So...
Okay, so, Thomas, how do they actually get 157 extra access cards?
Because that could, and again, kind of walking backwards how that may have happened, um, before my time here, could've been new employees had came on and other employees had separated, but that electronic access card had not been turned off for that employee who had separated. So, that's the type of internal control lapse that could've led to that many remaining active.
How would you have known if they were separated? How will you know in the future if they're separated if they're county employees?
Because when we're getting payment from the county now, we're getting a listing of employees and that access card assigned to them, or employees that are getting a physical hang tag each month, so that we can reconcile that to the, the access cards that remain active on the touch reader and ones that should be deactivated because they were no longer paid for.
And you will also know whether they've reached the limit of 600?
Correct.
As opposed to going beyond?
Exactly, because we'll see the total number that was receiveded to us across those facilities.
Okay.
Um, and then likewise, at the Club One, because both the Fresno County and Club One resulted in significant amount of money, of revenue that, that the city of Fresno didn't collect. On Club One, what happens there? So, they have 100 stalls a day. Is it, is it the interpretation of that contract? Are those 100 stalls at any one time? And then, if 101 people park to use Club One, is that when it activates the extra dollar charge? Or is it the first 100 of the day? And after 100 uses for the day, that, any other parking is an additional dollar to the city of Fresno?
I understand what you're saying, and that is one of the pieces that when I came to this, became something where I had questions as well. And the way I've read that contract language that we have with Club One is that that is 101 parking stalls or spaces. So, that may be more than 100 validations per day, but as you described, there may not have been more than 100 vehicles in those assigned spaces at any point in time. So, there's two ways that we're going towards addressing that. The first is that, as you've seen, brought to council before, we now have our standard bulk rate agreement with more consistent language, so that we don't have this type of confusion in the future, because this Club One contract is a legacy contract that's in its own form. Um, the second piece is, we're moving forward with SP Plus, our operator, to begin to get us a project plan and pricing for replacement of the access control hardware in the garage, because that's very old technology. And so, we already have the Ski Data brand hardware that the city has already competitively bid at the airport. So, we have the opportunity to leverage that existing contract to see what pricing would look like for new access control hardware in Garage Eight. That's gonna do two things. Number one, resolve this type of validation scenario where we would be able to tell the maximum number of vehicles that any client at any given time had in the facility. That's important, not only for the Club One contract, but also for the Radisson contract, which is another legacy contract, not mentioned in the audit, where we know we have similar internal control and revenue collection gaps.
Okay, because when I read the contract, I could see, I could see discrepancy on how you wanted to interpret that. If Club One is purchasing on a monthly basis 100 stalls, then in their mind, they could see it that, well, we have 100 stalls throughout the day, and cars may move in and out of those stalls throughout their customer day. And they never go over the 100 except at peak times, and then they might go over by 125, they might go over by 25 stalls, and then they'd only give us $25. But the other way of looking at it is, they had a 100 cars a day that can park in a stall, and that could, that could be 300 cars a day. Now, they've gone over by 200 cars, and they owe us $200. So, moving forward, what is the answer for, for that?
Moving forward is my interpretation, the Parking Division's interpretation, is the first scenario that you described. That language is 100 stalls, and that may mean, like you say, you could've had, you know, 180 vehicles come through in a given day, but no more than 100 at any given time, so there wouldn't have been overage. And so, again, the two resolutions to this are, one, in the future, being a little more careful about the contract language, that it's something we can accurately collect revenue on, given our existing systems, and two, bringing our systems up to modern parking revenue control technology.
Okay. Is, which is the common practice when you have a legacy, um, contract? Um, do they get the number of stalls per day? Or is it generally, they get 100 vehicles that get, the first 100 vehicles are no charge to them?
I think that if we were gonna go away from the interpretation of 100 total and the first num, and the hundred, you know, first 100 vehicles, that we should review that contract with the city attorney's office and get their recommendation as to how we proceed with Club One, if we're gonna take that route.
Yeah, and Club One's an interesting user, too, because a lot of their peak time is when we don't, when the garage is free, anyway. So, we don't charge in that garage after, what, 7:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, and a lot of their users come in the evening, if, you know, late at night, et cetera. So, that one's a little bit of a different animal compared to the others.
Even occasionally, users from northwest Fresno that come down after 6:00 PM?
That's, that's what I've heard. That's what I've heard.
Right. Um, now, what, what are we doing to address the amount of money that we really believe is the city of Fresno's owed to us by the county of Fresno, Club One? And if there's any others, I'd like to hear those as well.
Um, so, first, with respect to the county of Fresno, um, for the back time period that wasn't paid, that was referenced here in the audit, we've already received a partial payment of $185,000 from them for that. Um, we have a remaining approximately $74,000 that remains in dispute, and we're still in active conversations with the county of Fresno to collect that past amount. Um, but going forward, they have been paid all the way through January 2019. With respect to the county and all of our other bulk rate rental, um, parking space contracts, um, as I described, that situation with the access cards, we've now implemented and documented a written reconciliation process for, number one, ensuring that bulk rate payments are coming to the city, not SP Plus. When I arrived, some were coming to us, some were coming to SP Plus. It was not consistent. There was not a consistent process for tracking and reconciling when the payments were coming in, when contracts were due to expire, applying late fees for, um, clients that were not paying in a timely manner. And then, again, as I described with the county doing that same process, with other clients of ensuring that the number of access cards or permits being issued matches the amount that they're paying for. So, we now have a documented business process that we've implemented, and we're doing our final steps on, um, rolling out that standard operating procedure and transferring it, transmitting it to internal audits, so they can see how we've treated the finding.
Okay, and how about for Club One? How much did they end up owing us? $98,000? The, and you've talked about the, Fresno County has paid the bulk of that back already, and then, there's a dispute over 74K. What's happening with Club One?
The Club One $98,000, again, goes back to that initial discussion as to whether or not it is for the number of spaces or for the number of total vehicles that came in. So, thus far, we've ensured that Club One is up to date on their $6,000 monthly payment, but haven't pursued collecting the $98,000.
Okay.
Question. So, city manager, how do you propose to deal with this situation with Club One? I mean, obviously, 100 total parking spaces is very different than people who come in and out of Club One, which is a lot more than 100, and generating quite a different revenue stream than just having 100 spaces?
So, um, like Thomas said, this new accounting system, if you will, with SP Plus will help. On top of that, their agreement, I believe, probably expires the end of June. Is that correct? So, whenever we, um, renew that, we'll make sure that the language is clear. And because it, and Kyle Kirkland, the owner of Club One, has been very clear that he'll work with us however we want to moving forward. But again, I think we need to capture the number of stalls that are being used and what time they're actually being used, because it's not fair to charge Kyle, you know, a dollar extra for any use after 6:00 PM, when we're not charging anybody else. But we will work for, he's been very, um, um, you know, he's reached out, wants to make sure that he'll work with us to find a solution moving forward. And I wanna remind everybody, Jane and I were just whispering, but, um, Club One, we do get about a million dollars in, in table tax revenue from them every, every year. And, uh, and so, that's why this contract has historically, um, with the city, been treated a little bit differently with just 100 stalls per, per day, or what have you.
Do you have anything you wanted to add, or you still wanna, before we move on to the next finding? Okay, all right. Let's, let's shift to finding number two, and we might come back to finding number one.
Finding number two, Parking Services not followed standard accounting practice, and thus, has been able to have proper financial oversight of parking revenue. What that means is, for instance, and let's use the Club One contract as an example. Um, the, whatever revenue was earned from the Club One contract was not booked into the city's financial system with an identifier that said, "Club One." It was just parking revenue. So, there was no way to track whether they were paying the correct amount or whether they were paying the validations or not. It just wasn't being booked properly. That was the case with a lot of the revenue that was coming in into parking. It wasn't being distinguished as to where it was coming from, whether it was from a garage or a parking lot, or what vendor it was coming from, be it the county, Club One, anyone else. It's just parking revenue. And so, that made it very difficult, virtually impossible, to find out, are these entities, are they meeting their requirements or not? And then, it also made it very difficult to determine, um, whether a particular lot or garage was operating at a break even, or at a loss, or at a profit. And so, the recommendation was made to go ahead and change the accounting practices to make it easier to identify these transactions, where they came from, and, uh, both the source and the location of the revenue.
But, but still, our, our accounting practices, were they so out of whack or antiquated that we didn't know whether parking was making money in general, or the specific lots?
Specific lots. We know what parking is doing generally. That we can address. But the question is, is the promenade lot making money? We can't answer that, because nothing is being booked as this was generated by the promenade lot, by contracts that are there. We have a contract with Greyhound, for instance. We couldn't tell you whether or not, when the, we know Greyhound paid, but if you pulled a parking report, a revenue report, you couldn't tell how much they paid, because it just is buried and called parking revenue. It was that way. But I believe that's changed.
Mike, whose, whose job is it to really catch that for us? I mean, council members, of course, are gonna be, that's very far down in the weeds for council members to know our parking lot accounting practices. So, is that the parking management, or is it our finance department? Or who is, who should've caught this earlier?
Ultimately, it should've been parking that should've, they're, they're the ones that initially booked the revenues, so they would've been the ones who set up that, that parking line, uh, or that identifier. That should've come from them.
Is the fix, the software fix, or is it a personnel fix?
Yeah, the soft, the fix is a procedure fix, meaning you, you, uh, it becomes an operating procedure of parking staff, when they book a revenue, to book it with an identifier. Says, "This is the garage, this is the, the source." So, it's a procedure fix, not necessarily a personnel or, uh, or a, or a technology fix.
Do we have any information that during the course of this time, did any of our employees that are in charge of this come to the administration and make a suggestion, "Hey, we don't know what's happening at individual parking lots"?
That I don't know. I couldn't answer that.
To my knowledge, no, but if, but for those of you that know me, I mean, parking is a love of mine, right? And so, um, we have been tracking, our office, under Bruce as city manager, and then, but when I became city manager, if you recall, council, um, adopted the new fee structure, I believe it was February 2017, I think. Um, and then, I had just been kinda tracking with, with the budget staff, with Dell, whenever he was still here. And so, I don't believe, no one came to us and said, "Hey, the procedure's not accurate." But we were looking at revenues, and that's what made me think. If we're going to really, um, make sure that we have a robust parking program downtown, um, this is one of the very first audits I wanna do, to kinda roll up our sleeves and find out what's happening in the division. A great opportunity, like we said earlier. Dell's leaving, Thomas is coming in. But, but no one came forward and said, "Hey, the procedure is, it's how, it's how, what was happening up there for a while."
Hey, did you have a?
Yeah, so, you're going to rectify this by now, identifying where the source of revenue comes, no matter where it comes from. It won't be lumped into a pot. It'll be identified as a promenade, or this lot, or something else. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, you know, relative to finding two, walking through those bullets, kinda the first one, I already mentioned, was making sure that we're getting the payments on time. Um, the second one there, we created unique kind of identification codes in PeopleSoft for all of the different facilities for coding not only our revenues collected, but also our expenses, so that that way, we can actually see a true profit and loss for each, um, facility if we were looking at it standalone. And again, then having the process for ensuring that we're receiving those payments in a timely manner, we're posting them to those new identification codes that we've made, and then doing that reconciliation to make sure those payments are happening. The other thing, those last two bullets, what those really describe were that some of our credit card, our credit card processing transactions that come in from the credit card processor were not being posted to the PeopleSoft general ledger frequently enough, so that it meant that you couldn't often forecast steady streams of revenue. So, we've now taken that process and documented how it will be done weekly, so that we're seeing the revenue post to the general ledger and to all of those different facilities in a more predictable timeframe.
Cool. Is that good? Uh, Thomas, before we go on to finding three, I just wanna add something that I made in council comments a couple of weeks ago. You know, we're, we're very reliant upon our department heads being very engaged in their department. And so, I know you're brand new. I would ask that, moving forward, if you see, uh, red flags in your department, um, I know you work for the city manager, you don't work for council, but at the same time, at the end of the day, you really work for the citizens of Fresno. And so, please, um, give it your direct oversight. And if you see anything else that needs to be fixed, we just can't put it off years and years and end up in the same spot again in the future.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's talk about finding three.
Finding three, Parking Services could've collected more revenue than it did over the revenue period. I think we've kind of already touched on that, that because of, um, the, uh, the monitoring of contracts, or lack thereof, and because of the inability to, or the, uh, yeah, the inability to track revenues at a particular pace, or a particular location, or a particular contract, um, the Parking Services could've collected more than what it did over that time. Um, grand total, as I mentioned earlier, about 240, little over 242,000, over the 21-month period of this review. That was our estimate as to what was lost. Um, okay, that's all I have on that.
Well, is parking, finding three, in my notes, does it talk about tightening up the procedures of people collecting money?
It, uh, talk, yes. It talks about staff reviewing, uh, uh, monthly reports or weekly reports from SP Plus to make sure that we're, we have the right number of tags and also the right number of validations, or, um, it also means we monitor contracts more closely and, uh, and then also make adjustments for rates. That was another thing that did not occur, that there were- That was another thing that did not occur, that there were contracts and it said that when the master fee schedule rate is increased, the contract amount that we could bill an entity could be increased. Those increases were not passed along. So it's monitoring contracts more closely and it's documenting more thoroughly within the financial system. That's really what the procedure's saying here.
Finding three is also talking about meters as well as the lots. Is that correct?
Uh, I don't believe it's talking about meters in three. I believe that's finding five.
Oh, so if I'm talking about collection of coins at the meters, is that finding five?
Yes, that is finding five.
Okay. All right. I may have jumped the gun on that. All right. So what is the fix for finding three?
So these items in finding three are ones that are addressed kind of as refinements to the items I've mentioned in findings one and two about tracking the rental contracts and making sure that we're not allowing them to lapse. For the folks that are, starting that in enough time so that the contracts are happening, the Club One process as I talked through. And then the other one is those rental contracts call for the annual CPI escalation identified in master fee schedule, making sure that we're noticing those clients, that that increase has happened and then ensuring that they're paying us for that amount. And that's something that we started with the July one cycle and the CPI increase that occurred with those. So that piece has already been ongoing.
Have we let time go by without noticing that the CPI had brought the price of those contracts up?
In the past, for a couple of the contracts that had that reference in it, but it had not been done. So for example, the SBA contract, I believe, had about three years without the CPI increase occurring. And so we did go notify them of that and apply the retroactive CPI increase to get them up to the maximum rate that they would be at.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments on finding three? All right, let's go to finding four.
Finding four, Parking Services does not require manager approval before dismissing citations. As, you know, we issue citations for parking violations, individuals can go up to the fourth floor, the parking office, and either pay those citations or if they have a case to make as to why that citation was not issued in a valid way, they can make that case to the parking manager or to the parking staff. What internal audit found was that even when they did not make it to the manager specifically, they made it to a frontline staff or some other member of the parking staff in the office, those citations were getting waived if the individual had a, what they believe was a strong enough case. There was no manager level approval needed at that time. So the recommendation was you need to have manager level approval. You cannot just have frontline staff just signing off and waiving tickets or waiving citations on their own.
Do we know how many were signed off without the manager's approval? Do we have any?
Uh, there were, the internal audit found, during the time period, five thousand two hundred and seventy-one citations during the twenty-one month period. Now, whether those were, well, there were five thousand two hundred and seventy-one.
Citations?
Citations.
And then how many of them were dismissed?
Those were the dismissals.
Oh, that was the dismissed. Okay, got you.
Yes.
And but what we don't know is how many of them were dismissed by somebody other than the parking manager?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And now, and that's really interesting because there's been times that the council president has seen a meeting go long and literally tell the public, "If you've had a problem with the parking meter, come back to my office or come back to parking. We'll take care of it." It's not done all the time, but it's, sometimes we cause problems by being so long-winded up here that we've created parking citations. So I've seen that done in the past. How, so going forward, what you're telling me is that only the parking manager can waive a citation?
I'll let Thomas talk to you about how he's changed the processes there.
Council president, I think you're right in that there are times that that happens. But if you average out that number of citations over the audit period, that's two hundred and fifty-one per month. So I think there are times. I don't think there are two hundred and fifty-one times.
You're right. You're right. I agree. So that's, you're right. That's a great point. That's not the bulk of the problem of why citations are being waived. I'd like to, that is a great question. I'd like to know, why do we waive citations as often as we do?
I'd like to, before you jump in. So I think it goes back to Mike's comment earlier about our former parking manager was more about customer service, if you will. And so, but now, at the minute we found out that those citations were being waived by all levels of staff, I believe before Thomas came on board, Jennifer, the director, had issued a memo to her staff indicating no more, only the parking manager or the department director, if I recall. But I'll let Thomas address that.
So first, to speak to the five thousand two hundred and seventy-one, those are all reductions and dismissals. So that could have been somebody that came in with a disabled placard and had it reduced, someone that had expired tags and had it reduced, as well as ones that were voided due to officer error, as well as ones that somebody submitted an appeal and the citation was dismissed through that process, not just kind of informal request to dismissals. What I learned when I came on board, you know, because this was one that the team obviously had a lot of questions and concerns about because, you know, they felt as though they were doing things very above board. And what I encountered was that a lot of staff had access in the citation issuance system to dismiss the citation. And they would always put a note in there, you know, "Previous parking manager advised me to dismiss this." So that you had this documentation that it was occurring, but it was, that's not a best practice in terms of documenting access levels and internal controls. So there's a couple of things that have occurred since this audit happened. The first was, I did a review of the access levels in the citation system, developed a matrix of the different authorities allowed in the system and limited staff in the system to the lowest level of security access that they needed in order to do the core functions of their job. The second was issued, as it references in there, an expectations memo, which is a standard operating procedure. Issued different documents talking about the types of dismissals I just described, such as ADA or an incorrect address or officer error and who has the authority to make that decision and how it's documented. Finally, we issued another directive to do a monthly audit of the reductions so that the parking supervisor will pull the transactions for a given day, review those transactions for the reductions that took place and identify that staff have appropriately documented those reductions. So the reductions that remain with staff are being done that way. We've limited the number of staff that can dismiss a citation on appeal and the kind of qualitative, you know, dismissal of citations that come from council, the city manager's office and so on are routed directly to me to administer.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, so the thing that I'm still struggling with is you had a whole bunch of city staff that were able to dismiss these citations before. A lot of them did, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So now, I'm still not clear, who is going to have the authority to be dismissing these? Is it just you? Is it-
The parking supervisor has the authority to dismiss citations that have been appealed. Any other type of citation dismissal outside of the appeal process, which is identified in vehicle code, is done by myself or the department director.
Okay. So there will be three people solely responsible for these dismissals?
Correct.
Okay. Whereas, there were how many before?
A lot.
A lot. I mean, we don't even know. People just dismissed them?
Yeah, I know based on the prior access levels, I would say it was closer to a half dozen.
Okay. So now there are three specific folks responsible for this and overseeing this?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Let's go to finding number five.
This is the one you were waiting for.
Yeah.
Parking Services lacks adequate internal controls surrounding the parking meter collection process. Parking meters are a big revenue source, over almost, a little over one point three million last fiscal year. And, but what we found, what internal audit found was that the collection method was, it opened up the possibility of, it added risk to the entire collection or to the revenue collection process. There were four employees responsible for meter collection. Each one had a designated route. They went on it individually. They did not go in teams. So they were going out on their own on each of the four routes. The routes did not change, so they were doing the same route day in, day out for years. The meters did not provide an accounting. They're just a collection box. They don't spit out a receipt that tells you how much cash went in them. It's just a box and where people put change into. So there was no verification of what went into it when the person went to collect. Unsecured devices were used to empty the coin meters and then, and to put into a separate lock box, which is at a different location. And then the location here at City Hall, where it was counted, did not have a security camera and was closed off by a chain link fence, not very secure. So again, I believe that those areas have been addressed since this report came out. But that was the condition when we, when internal audit went out there.
Is there-
Go ahead, go ahead.
How long have the solutions been in place?
I'll let Thomas address that.
Hey there. I'll work backwards from kind of long-term solution that is described there. So the credit card parking meter, RFP, closes on March 29th. And so having the electronic credit card meters solves a number of these reconciliation and collection issues. The first one, relative to the security of the coin counting area, when I had received this audit versus the past practice that I've encountered, we're starting to look away from doing this volume of count in the office and actually having the bank do a count for us. Because right now, we count all the coin in the office. We prepare this deposit. There's all of this staff labor that goes into it. And then the bank receives our deposit, opens all of the bags, counts the coin again and then deposits it based on their count, not ours. So there's a lot of kind of duplication of labor in there. And any time that you're spending counting the coin and moving the coin is an internal controls challenge as opposed to, we're drafting a process right now where it'll be taking that coin when it's collected in the field and getting it into a sealed deposit bag as quickly as possible. So that's our first step in terms of refining this business process.
But when did that process begin?
We started the kind of evaluation of using the bank for their coin counting about two months ago in earnest. But we've made a number of these other internal control changes identified in the short-term solutions within, I would say, the past four months as we've worked with the meter shop staff to identify their shift rotations so that you don't have the same person collecting in the field. Some of the other items that are described here in terms of how the coin is handled in the field is just due to the nature of the age of the mechanical meters and how they have to be collected as opposed to a modern credit card meter.
What I'm fishing for is the, you know, what has been the monthly revenue collection since we implemented the solution?
Oh, the monthly revenue collection, since we've implemented the solution, has been consistent with our other collections. This isn't an area where audit had identified-
A number.
Go ahead, I'm sorry?
A number, a specific number.
In terms of?
In terms of the amount of revenue collection, how much money was collected in the two months, each month or cumulatively both months from the meters.
So for example, in January of 2018, we were collecting a hundred and forty-six thousand. This January, we collected a hundred and forty-three thousand. So these are not, this is not an area that the auditors had identified for us where they saw any reason to believe a shortage was occurring relative to the cash handling. It was that the cash handling was not at best practices.
So explain to us, why is there a fluctuation in the amount of parking revenue collected? Because when you average out the one point three seven million across twenty-one months, that's sixty-five thousand plus. You're giving me a figure of one forty-six, one forty-three in January. So what accounts for that fluctuation in the amount of revenue collection off the meters?
You'll see a number of things when you compare some months in January 2018 to 2019, what you're going to see is a variance due to the fact that Fulton Street has opened. So you have some months in the prior year where other meters came online and then other months where Fulton was new last year versus this year, it may be different. The other thing that you're seeing is event revenue from month to month. The volume, and I don't just mean, you know, Grizzlies and convention center events and so on, but also events and activities that are going on downtown during the week and during the weekend. Those may ebb and flow both from month to month and also seasonally, just the volume of commercial activity that you see going on.
Do you have some random examples from going backwards in this past, the past twelve months? Do you have, can you tell me what September was or what November was or what July was?
Yeah, so I can give you like, for example-
Just because, again, again, there's a big, huge mismatch between the average of sixty-five K and the one forty-six, one forty-three.
For example, you know, July 2018, we were at a hundred and twenty-five K and July 2019, we were at a hundred and seventy K. So you're going to see these variances based on-
Okay, so give me a downward variance. What's the lowest in the last twelve months?
So for example, November 2018, which is, I believe, when Fulton Street opened, October. So November 2018 was a hundred and ninety thousand in meter revenue and November 2019 was a hundred and thirty-four thousand in meter revenue. And again, that's comparing this November to the November after Fulton Street opened.
These numbers are not adding up for me. One second. Let me double check my math. Yeah, so let me clarify just to make sure I'm reading this audit correctly. Over twenty-one months in the audit period, one point three seven million was collected in the parking meters, coins. Is that, is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
That was just, yeah, just fiscal eighteen.
One fiscal year. Okay, got it, got it. So over the course of twelve months? Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Let me- Okay, so then the average is not sixty-five. It's more a hundred and fourteen thousand, roughly around there.
Yeah, and to give you an idea, year to date, so of that one point three seven that's identified in the audit, parking meter collection so far through January is at eight hundred and ten thousand. So we'll be at about one point six this fiscal.
Okay.
That's a good question. All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
So Nelson, so I mean, I think you're getting to a point here, which I think is very legitimate. So are you suggesting or questioning, why is there three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand less in this audit period than what is typical? Because as you're pointing out, this year, the numbers are dramatically higher each month that we're collecting now. Is that, Nelson, is that what-
What I'm suggesting is that, you know, in finding, from finding five, I think, what I'm suggesting is that, you know, they've given us a figure of the amount they collected within one fiscal year. I've averaged that out. What I'm suggesting is that, similar to some of the other findings, we were not provided a figure here of potential loss because it's unknown. There's no accountability mechanism to understand if any revenue was lost because of the risk exposure. So what I'm suggesting is that since they've implemented these practices, that-
Revenue has increased.
Revenue has increased in trying to get out of, you know, a figure of what we lost because of finding number five.
And I've got kind of two comments to that as it relates to the parking meter revenue. There's another thing, again, as we talk about kind of program philosophies and, you know, accountability versus customer service, another thing that drives parking meter revenue is parking enforcement. And that's been one of the other changes that's happened since I've been here in July is that we're seeing an increase in our citation revenue and a change in the expectations of the staff in the field so that folks know the likelihood of potentially being cited is a little greater than it used to be. So they're feeding the meter more frequently than may have been occurring in the past. The other thing is relative to the credit card meters and when that proposal comes before you, every single credit- Every single credit card meter head has its own revenue reconciliation trail so that that meter knows exactly how many dollars in coin will be in it. It is in a sealed canister so that when the person collecting the coin in the field, they do not have access to that coin all the way as it makes it to the count room. So then you have not only a more secure process, but a paper trail to be able to show exactly how much every single parking meter in downtown is generating.
Sure, and I understand. There are lots of variables. This is a question we can't answer right now. The analysis is not conducted.
Thank you.
Thomas, I, I wanted to ask on this, this one too. So for me, the way I read finding number five, finding number five is, you know, kind of different from the others, but it's, it's fraught with problems of hypothetical theft by employees. And then also, it also can help us determine if we have the right number of people in the field making these collections. And then it also talks about the amount of training that goes on in the folks that are out picking up money from meters. And so tell me about that. Tell me about personnel, number of personnel. And you, I think you just mentioned that moving forward, the new meters, people are not gonna physically move coins into a bag or move coins into a box. That that will be done automatically and they won't physically touch the, the coins. I get that one. And by the way, I'm not accusing anybody of theft, but in the old practices, it was certainly opportunity for loss, that, right?
Exactly.
And then, so I think you've got that one. But what about, do we have the right number of people in the field doing this work? And do they have the right amount of training? It sounds like there's gonna be a need for some new training with this new process.
I would say that the first piece relative to the documentation and training is something that we're obviously building because we don't have a strong written procedure comfortable with where I would like to see it for this collection process right now. In the future, if we were to move towards the credit card meters, then I'd be able to better answer the staffing level question because in a sealed system like that where the staff never come in contact with cash, it's completely reasonable for someone to collect the meters by themselves the entire route because you no longer have the need for, um, partial dual custody or other types of reconciliation.
Okay, are we still going forward with the policy that revenue collectors are going out by themselves?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Are revenue collectors, are the people pulling money from the meters until we get the smart meters, are they going out, one person covering the same loop?
They're, they're covering, it's one person per route, but those routes have been changing at random times.
Okay.
So that it's not just one person collecting that specific set of meters every single day, month to month to month. That part we have changed now, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Thomas, so you've gone through all of the different, uh, findings, uh, solutions you've implemented. Uh, how long ago did you begin to, so when did you first read this audit and made aware of these findings in this organized format? And, uh, when did you start implementing these solutions?
Um, I was made aware of the audit process on my first day of work here in June. And they let me know that the process was going on. I didn't review a draft report. I can't remember that date off the top of my head.
Rough, rough.
But probably sometime in the fall. Um, I reviewed a draft report and provided the comments that you see there as management response. Um, and kind of in that time in between is where, as I started to delve into the operation, began to get a sense of some of these things that the audit team identified for us. I was also starting to notice those in the operation as well and beginning to map out what these, um, changes might look like.
When did your predecessor officially retire?
Um, like July fourth or some, July third.
And then, well, there's probably a question for you. You said this was triggered by, ultimately by his, the predecessor's, uh, eh, making, the predecessor retiring, you had, you thought it was a good time to, to begin this audit or to ask for this audit?
Um, yeah, that, that reason in particular, but also, you know, um, we really wanted to get a handle on after council approved the new parking rates in February of, help me again, seventeen. Um, after that, changes made, we really wanted to look at revenues and the processes in place. Our office had to get involved with a couple of the contract negotiations, um, and it was just something I wanted to track. I know there's a lot of interest, political interest in our parking structures downtown. So it was something that I really wanted to get a handle on and, and with Thomas coming on board, I thought it was a really good opportunity.
Yeah, so I think we've worked our way systematically through the findings and the recommendations. So, um, now we'll just have open comments and so Nelson, you?
Sure. Uh, I'd like to speak to the principal auditor. Hi. Please say your name just for the record for.
Oh, Kriti Agarwal.
Fantastic. Do you wanna bring the mic down a little bit?
Sure. It's Kriti Agarwal.
Great. I've got a few questions, well, more than a few. Um, primarily for you and then other folks I think can step in, um, as, as they deem appropriate if you can answer the question.
If you want to grab the report, just in case I need to reference.
Yeah, sure, please. Great. Uh, so first question, uh, what is your background, your education?
I have a bachelor's in finance, a master's in accounting, and I hold a certification in internal audit. I've been doing this for almost ten years, a little over ten years, actually.
Okay, and, and how long have you worked for the city with those ten years?
Oh, only about a year and a half.
And so the specific, uh, training you have to complete the audits, that was in the latter part of your credentials?
I'm sorry, what?
What is the specific training you have to complete the audits within that, eh, education?
I didn't quite under, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
So you, you listed off your credentials, the BA in finance, master's in accounting.
Yeah.
Uh, is that the specific education that you have to complete the audits or were you trained when you came in?
Um, well, my master's in accounting was a focus on internal audit. And then my CIA itself is, um, that's specifically like a, it's not, like external auditors have a CPA. Internal auditors is, may or may not have a CIA, so it's just.
You know, and I'm gonna jump in. I don't think our, um, I don't think Kriti was thinking that she'd be coming here for a job interview. Um, or I can assure you that our personnel department has made sure that she meets the minimum qualifications for the position before she was even interviewed for the position. And I'm sure Mike can vouch for that too. I, I, I sense, I wanna just make sure that, I mean, she's completely qualified to do the audit. I just don't want you grilling her about her resume and educational background.
Well, she's the person who conducted it. I'm, I'm getting into the process. I think what we, eh, we can all read the audit and we had a few clarification questions. Um, I think I'd like to dig into the process and, um, and how it was conducted and such. Um, so that was, I'll, I'll limit the, as far as your credentials.
Sure.
Uh, so what, what are the goals of an audit or what is the purpose of an audit? And this could be for you or, or others, just generally.
I mean, the goals of an audit, I mean, it just varies for, from audit to audit. I guess for this specific audit, it was really to see how parking divisions, were there, were there inefficiencies? And if there were, how they could be improved upon and how to, um, improve the effectiveness and efficiency of the parking division for the city of Fresno.
Okay, great. Um, wh, how many audits have you conducted with the city of Fresno?
To date, um, what do, we're on audit number five, I think? Yeah, we're, we're current, completed four, we're on audit number five right now.
Okay, well, from your perspective, can you walk me through the process of a city of Fresno internal audit?
Um, well, we will identify or select a unit, a business division or a unit to audit. Um, we would notify that division or unit, so we would send out an entrance letter, um, notifying them that they've been selected to, that, for an audit to be conducted by our team. Um, we then set up an entrance conference to kind of go through the process as well as the, the objectives of that audit. Um, and then also let, letting them know that there will be specific documentation that we would be requesting from them and their, um, their various team members. Um, we then receive that documentation, we analyze it, review it. That is part of our fieldwork. Um, we put to, once the fieldwork is completed, we put together a report basically with our findings as well as, or the results, um, and then, um, and with that as well, we include the, our recommendations for those findings. Um, we, um, then sit down with the division or business unit and go through the draft report, um, ask if they have any questions or if there are any inaccuracies of the report. And with that, if there are, we would go back and update that accordingly. Um, after which then we would then submit the draft report to them to provide a management response, which we give them fourteen business days to respond to. Oh, no, calendar days, right? Um, and then they respond to that and then basically it's more or less finalized unless there are other questions that come, that come about.
When you say management response, who, who is that specifically?
It's for this specific, um, rep, audit, it would have been parking, so, um, Thomas specifically and his team.
Nobody else?
No, not, no, not really.
What do you mean, not really?
Well, no, that's what I mean, no.
Um, so when was the, the first time you were asked to work on this audit?
Um, it was probably maybe.
I have the date, actually.
Oh, do you? Okay, yeah.
Yep. Um, I believe, and cause Mike and I talked about this a while, uh, last week, um, mid-March of twenty eighteen. And, and her first entrance memo for the parking audit went to the DARM director and the parking manager on April twelfth, twenty eighteen.
Great. And, uh, who asked you to work on the audit? I presume the city manager or who was that exactly?
Yeah, I believe city manager's office.
Uh, who else worked on the audit with you?
Uh, Karen Jenks.
One more time?
Karen Jenks, uh, she was the internal auditor. Um, she's now up in, uh, DARM.
And she's the only other person?
Yeah.
Um, what instructions were you given when you were assigned this particular audit? And, uh, what timeline were you given to complete that work?
I don't really think we had instructions per se. I mean, we kind of knew that we wanted to just take a holistic approach. So we kind of determined the objectives ourselves. And then timeline wise, um, we were just told to be thorough, you know? We weren't really given a specific timeline.
Okay.
Thorough and complete, basically.
And that, in that direction, from the city manager's office as well?
Yeah.
Uh, did you have any meetings in preparation for your work, um, on this particular audit?
Uh, we met with, um, we met with the former parking manager a few times as well as one of his, um, minute, um, analysts a few times to go through, um, the contracts.
Who, who was the analyst?
Um, her name is Mea. I don't remember her last name. O'Neil, Mea O'Neil, yeah, that's correct.
And that was obviously, that would, that would have been in March or going past March?
It was after March.
Um, ultimately, who, I mean, just generally and then with respect to this particular audit, and you might, you kind of described some of this in the process.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, who supervised and approved, uh, the work?
Um, is that you, Mike, or was it, was it, uh, it's Mike?
Uh, what information specifically did you request, uh, before beginning your work on this audit?
Uh, we requested the, um, the specific contracts that the city has for the parking structures.
That was the, those are the only documents?
No, and then as well as in terms of when we were going through for, um, the citations, the turb, the, I think it was the Turbo data that we asked for.
From Turbo themselves?
What?
From Turbo themselves?
Uh, I believe Mea gave it actually to us. And then, um, um, SP Plus gave us some information too.
Okay, so Tur, so the two, the two contractors, Turbo and S, SP Plus?
Yeah, um, this, and then, and then she was able to give us, the, the Mea was able to give us the rest of the data.
And that was, that was all strictly data from the, from the contractors, data and documents or?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Uh, can you tell me all of the people you were in communication with, um, as you completed your work on this particular audit?
Like, everybody?
Well, I mean, with respect to this, uh, to this audit.
Um, well, it would have been Karen, Mike, um, the assistant controller of that, um, Thomas, before Dale left, I was in contact with him, as well as with, um, Mea, um. Am I forgetting anyone else? Yeah, SP Plus, me, I was in contact with them.
Of course.
Sure. So did you have an interview with the former department head? Is that what I just heard?
Uh, you mean Dale?
Yes.
Yes, we met with him.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and then the, I mean, you listed all these folks off and then, um, how did you communicate with these folks? I assume it was, was it emails, phone calls, voicemails?
Yeah, emails, phone calls. Um, we met, um, we had actual meetings with those, with these individuals as well.
Okay, in person?
Yeah.
Uh, so this, I think you've kind of answered this one already, but, uh, I'll ask it. What are the procedures that the city follows in completing an audit?
Uh, we have an AO that we follow.
A, AL?
An AO, uh.
Oh, administrative order, okay.
Yeah.
Is that the one dash ten?
I'm sorry?
What, what number is that?
I believe it's one dash one zero, one dash ten, I believe.
Uh, and typically, I mean, I'm not sure, is there, is there a standard, uh, timeline for publishing the results of any given audit?
Um, no, there's no exact timeline. I mean, it's, it's a bit broad because you wanna be, um, obviously you wanna be timely, but you wanna be thorough and complete.
And when, uh, when was this audit completed?
So the last, I think we have a draft, I, the fi, a finalized version of it that I saw was, I think, January, early January that I have for the report.
Okay, um, looking at the, so going back to the actual audit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the letter that you drafted, the, the letter prior to the table of contents, I noticed that was not dated. Uh, can you recall when you, when you wrote this letter here, the one right before the, uh, table of contents?
Um, I mean, I probably would have, I mean, it was probably right around January, whenever, l, ear, late, late December, early January.
And then just for the record, uh, one more time, it, this isn't stated, it's in the document, but what period of time did the audit review?
The period of, it was July first, two thousand sixteen to March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Great, great. Um, so you began March, roughly March twenty eighteen and you completed, so you, you said that you saw a revised version in January, but when, I mean, when did you complete your portion?
No, no, that was, so, it was a, it was, that was when we completed it around January. That was when we, there's a date there that says, uh, January. So that's what I'm, that's what I would think would have been when we finalized it.
So on, uh, on the first page of the report, um, you know, it says, you know, at the request of the city manager, the city internal audit unit performed a limited scope transitional review of the parking services.
You're looking at the intro?
Uh, page, uh, one, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so can you elaborate a little bit on the, um, on the limited scope transitional review? And what, what that means and, and why, and why is limited scope?
Well, I mean, a limited scope is just, I mean, you're not looking at the entire, I mean, limited means, we're just looking at a small period of time. we're just looking at a small period of time. I mean, it would be very, I mean, this report would not even, we wouldn't be standing right here if we were looking at a, a full scope audit, right? I mean, we would still be, it would be still ongoing. I mean, that would be thousands and thousands and thousands of transactions to be looking at. So I think it's just to give you a snapshot of what is going on, um, in the par- in, in the parking division.
So, so this twenty one, this twenty one month time period-
Uh-huh.
Was that a judgment called by you or were you provided direction to, to examine that timeframe?
Uh, I believe that was a mutual decision we all made together.
And by all, you mean?
Meaning the internal audit unit as well as, uh, city manager's office as well.
Um, on page two, uh, the, this was a kind of disturbing part. I know that, uh, you worked with what you pretty much had and you made, you made that clear in sort of the lack of, uh, standard accounting principles and, and data.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so there's a footnote on page two. Uh, you note that the internal audit did not test the reliability of the data. Uh, can you elaborate for us what, on that, what that means?
Because SP, this is in regards to SP Plus data, so we don't have access to their systems. They just provide us the information and we go off of the information they provided. So because we don't have, we, we can't go into their systems, we can't access it, we have no way of knowing the, I mean, we can't fully rely on it, that's what it means.
Sure, so, so even if you wanted to, again, try and test the reliability, you're saying that you're not capable based on what they provided?
I'm saying that based upon what they provided, we tested what we could, but, I mean, we weren't in their systems. We couldn't ac- we don't have access to their systems.
So we're taking their word for it?
More or less, yeah.
Uh, flipping over to page nine, um, so you, you've given the completion date of, of January roughly. Uh, but on page nine, I noticed that, and, and then according to, you know, Thomas has, has been implementing, uh, the solutions. And this might be a, a question for the larger crowd. Uh, when, uh, so the onboarding of a senior management analyst to tackle, uh, recommendation-
You're looking at page under finding three?
Yes, on page, yeah, finding, finding three. Uh, so the audit was not completed, but we were, the city was already moving to, before the audit was complete, you folks were implementing some of the recommendations.
Well, we had met with Thomas, right? So we had had an ex- like, we had gone in there and met with him to go over the draft report. So he was already taking steps to, I believe, my understanding, you can confirm with Thomas, but, um, he was already taking steps to kind of remediate these things. And that's pretty typical, if you go, you can, a lot of times what internal auditors would do is, before a, a report is finalized, is while it's still in draft format, you can go in there and talk to your client and say, hey, these are some issues you may want to start already remediating. And, um, that's my understanding of what Thomas has already started doing.
So when it comes to finding three, when did you make Thomas aware of finding threes that he could, you know, force, forecast? So, sorry, have we on boarded the senior, uh, the senior management analyst?
Uh, that's a question for Thomas.
Thomas? Yes, that's Jason, uh, not, it was on time, uh, as projected in October twenty eighteen? Okay, great, um, so when did you, uh, make the client, uh, Thomas, uh, aware of that, of that particular finding number three?
It would have been, I believe, fall, fall sometime, I don't remember exactly the date.
So I wanted to ask about a sentence, uh, and this was with respect to the, um, the dismissals, and I believe it was finding number-
Four, uh, five? No, no, four.
No, four, four dismissals. Uh, so Thomas, I think you had sta- Thomas had stated that it was a combination, right? We, so we lost, uh, there was five thousand two hundred and seventy one tickets, uh, dismissed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that resulted in three hundred and eighty four thousand figure dollar, uh, dollar figure being lost.
What's, I mean, we didn't say lost, we said they were di- dismissed, so, I mean-
For, foregone revenue as a result of these tickets not being paid, you know? Uh, so Thomas had noted that it's both reductions and dismissals. Um, but there's a sentence here, it's at the top of page twelve, and I wanted to clarify with you, since you conducted the audit. It's, uh, it says specifically five thousand two hundred and seventy one citations with a total bail amount of three hundred and eighty four thousand nine dollars were dismissed during the audit period. So did you mean to write dismissed and or reduced tickets or is that strictly dismissal? Because my understanding reading this, um, was that it was all a matter of dismissal. Because I've, I've gotten the parking tickets, you know, my, I forgot to put my tags on, right, they're in my glove compartment. I've done this twice where I've got it reduced down to ten dollars, right? I'm part of that problem, you know? Um, so this figure, three hundred and eighty four thousand, does that include the reduced tickets or is that strictly dismissed, zero dollars paid on those tickets?
So at the top of my head, um, I, I can't quite remember if Turbo data can filter on just dismissals versus reductions, um... It's both, it would be both.
It's both, okay.
Yeah.
So reductions and dismissals. So we've already walked through every instance pretty much where the city lost money, uh, different categories. Uh, where the revenue might not have been collected in the parking garages, uh, that added up to two forty two, eight forty five, um-
Where are you looking, two hundred and forty two thousand?
That, that was, that wasn't finding number two, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm, I'm just going through and, and adding up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so two forty two, eight forty five and, and revenue is not collected. Uh, another three hundred and eighty four thousand foregone from the reductions and dismissals. Um, and so that altogether, six twenty six, right, oh, six hundred thousand dollars over the course of twenty one months, just in the sampling period. Obviously, I mean, you stated we can't, it's, it's, uh, giant endeavor to, to really take on the, the full kind of enormity. Um, and then one point three seven million at risk, right? We don't know if there, if there was money lost there, uh, unanswered question based on what we know and the data available to us. So in this, this is twenty one month, twenty one month period, I mean, how long, in your professional opinion, based on the contracts that you saw and how long you've been doing business with these particular vendors and how long these practices, uh, dismissing tickets or reducing tickets and, uh, the risk exposure? So, I mean, what length of period are we really talking about here? Because what I, what I did is you kind of heard some of the questions I asked earlier, was break it down month by month, um, and kind of get an average across, so they'd simply get an idea of relative.
You want to know when the city could make that up, is that what your question is?
No, no, my, my question is, uh, how long do you think is it possible to solving going on? Because we, you know, we add up-
I think, I think should be speculated.
Yeah, I would be speculating, I can't, I can't answer that question, that's-
Well, so, so tell me, let me tell me about the contract, I'm not sure if you have those documents on you or-
Unfortunately, I, I don't, no.
I think the purpose, I want to reiterate, the purpose of the audit was for us to go in and look at a division where there, that we thought there might be deficiencies. And, and some things that we were doing well, right? Council stresses every single week about the importance of taxpayer dollars and making sure we're doing everything we can to, to make the most of those and be efficient. This audit, I think, is a great example of us doing that. Now it's moving forward, now it's, the auditors will be checking back in. Kritty, when are you going to be checking back in with parking, six months?
Uh, we had said between, I think, nine to twelve months, so we could, if, if Thomas would, is, is comfortable with six months, we could come back in six months, but I think what we had initially said was between nine to twelve months, we would come back.
Right, so now to me, it's this moving, it's moving forward, right? We, we had some suspicions that there were things that we needed to clean up, do better in parking, et cetera, and, and we've identified those. They took a sample of, you know, the, the period of, you know, whatever the period of the audit was. And now we, now it's a point going forward, we have a, a game plan, if you will, and, and Thomas is, is, is on it. Our, my office meets with him regularly and, and, and he's on it. So I, now it's, it's checking back in, we're happy to report back to council. Once the auditors check back in, you're going to see, um, when we come forward with the budget, that his revenues are already increasing from just, um, the contract rates alone, so.
And we would, the reason why also that we're looking at, instead of doing it six months out versus, instead, we would prefer to do it nine to twelve months out is because we want to have a good, we want to have, have enough transactions, we want to have a nice, good sample size to be able to test. If you're looking at just six months from now, you would have, I mean, the implementation between how much has, how much change has happened between now and six months, it's not going to be a huge drastic, I, I, I can't, that would be my understanding. It wouldn't be a huge impact versus nine to twelve months, you would see some dent, I, I would think. So that's why we would, that's why we'd want to look somewhere between the nine, twelve month, twelve month range. And I actually did put in my calendar to follow up, once this was released, I did put in my calendar a year from now to, to go out and, um, to sort of follow up on this.
Sure, yeah, no, I understand that, you need, you need time for, for, you know, compare it really apples to apples and-
Right.
Have accurate, uh, uh, time period, uh, sample, you need time. Um, that, that concludes most of my questions. I think, uh, you know, you guys, you know, the administration has been privy to this information, uh, for some time and this was just released to council, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So I think naturally, myself and many other of the members, um, have a lot of curiosity.
I just looked back at it, I just looked back at some emails while we were sitting here because I, I could see where you were getting at with, with the audit. Our office received the audit late fall of twenty eighteen, um, holidays, we, we commented, I believe, we were waiting for management's response as well. We commented on the audit right before the, I think, the holidays.
Well, I, well, I just want to say that Granite Park was also in the mix of this, right?
Exactly.
So we were also pretty busy with that as well.
Right, and plus the other couple audits that you have going on. Uh, mid-January, I told Kritty that I needed, I wanted to write a memo to go with this, this audit in particular. So she received my memo, uh, end of January, beginning of February, then we released the audit. Again, an audit that was started in April of twenty eighteen, so how many months is that? To complete the, complete, to, to complete the audit in its entirety with the other four or five audits that you have going on, I actually will applaud them for how quickly they were able to turn something around. When the Granite Park audit was also going on during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate, appreciate that time and everybody included. I think after hearing your comments, um, my takeaway from your comments was that we made a, we made a pretty serious decision about one of our parking structures in December. And, and could that have been a time when the administration told us that, uh, maybe we should wait or maybe, um, we didn't have all the information, maybe we should wait for the audit's finality? Or was there, was, could that have been foreseen as a good time to just maybe not tell us the results?
Are you asking it was a good time to sell the Spiral Garage or not?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking? Well, I, I'll say, and, and all the parking revenue aside, what we can, what we do know is that all of, all of our five parking structures, um, and Thomas, jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong, or Dan, but when we did the facility assessment that Walter Piedmore did in twenty sixteen and then we increased parking rates in February of twenty seventeen, we knew that the Spiral Garage had the most vacancy. It was the one garage with three million dollars of deferred maintenance that was actually sinking our parking program. So I think we really made a really good decision in selling that, that one garage in December.
So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm-
And the timing, the timing, regardless of, of what the findings of the audit were, it, it's still a system issue parking division wide and they didn't dive down into the different parking structures. And based upon what we knew about deferred maintenance on that structure, uh, as well as the fact that there's a lot of vacancy in that structure, we actually thought it was a very good decision to sell that, that structure.
Yeah.
Well, 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 clearly the administration thought it was a good idea to sell it because I think it was put on the agenda by them. But I think what the chairman is getting at is that the council's decision-making process, I think, could have been compromised or was compromised by the lack-
Or impacted at least.
Yeah, or impacted by the lack of information.
Um, I, I would disagree with that, we talked about the Spiral Garage, um, probably a few months prior to that enclosed session. We talked about it, the, the, the revenue that it generated, the, the debt that it had on it. We talked about the deferred maintenance at that time. And then we, then we negotiated the deal with, um, Club One and brought it forward in December. So I think that you were equipped with as much information as we had at the time and we would still recommend at this point, even with all of this information, to, to sell that structure.
Well, my point is, and I, and I know you're defending that decision and I'm not even actually saying that this decision should be, you know, would have been, the outcome would have been any different, for sure. I, I'm not saying that we would have had a different outcome, I'm not predicting that. But what I am saying is, we could have been informed that we were seeing some problems specifically with the Club One contract that, um, might have told us to withhold on that decision. So I'm not, I'm not saying that my vote would have been any different, I'm not even suggesting that. And I agree with your comments about the Spiral Garage. Um, but for sure, if we're working through an audit and at some point we would have found out, at some point we found out that Club One owed us ninety eight thousand dollars, then, um, I wonder if that would have been-
Club One was paying us what, Club One was paying us what their contractual rate was. There is that discrepancy about stalls, number of stalls per day, et cetera. And, and, you know, I'm sure Kyle would make good if we did find out the methodology that we could go back and figure out what they owed us, et cetera. But moving forward, you know, I, I, we have a, a clear path forward with Club One. And so I, I don't think that, um, so I disagree with your statement, I was leaving it at that.
Well, that, that's okay, but part, and, and, and again, I don't want to, I'm not saying that the outcome would have been any different. Um, but we're, you know, we are, we're here to talk about audits and we're talking about a specific audit and it, we could have been notified, even if it was only in closed session, uh, dealing with the sale of city property, that there was something maybe we need to be brought aware of. And if, if that's where you're going with your, um, some of your questions, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I think, I think that's valid. But, I, but again, I'm not saying that it would change the outcome. But what we want to do, in my opinion, there's a, why we're here today is two things. To make sure that the city of Fresno serves its citizens' best interest at all times. And then also, um, to understand how this audit was rolled out and how that, and how council is brought up to speed on the audit procedures. And so I'm, I'm, again, I don't have a problem with your questioning, you know, I really don't. Um, I, it's a different, it's a different tact, but I, I see where you're getting at. And I, and I don't think it's out of, um, out of bounds to ask these questions about how audits, especially when we have not convened on an audit of this magnitude uh, since I've been a council member in six, six and a half years. So I would just like to say, you know, for the record, that as audits, um, move forward throughout our city, we're auditing, we, we've done five, uh, in, we've done five, we're doing more, we're going to do even more. There's going to be times when even preliminary findings in an audit, even in the draft form, could be known by council. And that might lead to the postponing of a decision or at least more input in the decision. I don't have a problem with that. Um, now, I think unless my colleagues have any other questions, we could make some closing comments and, and make any decisions you feel like we need to make. I, I'll start and then you guys can say whatever you'd like to say. I'm glad, Wilma, that you asked for the audit, okay? Because I prefer that than from finding out the hard way. And it was hard enough to find out what this audit showed me. It was hard enough to see this stuff. But I'm, I'm glad that you initiated the audit rather than it come to us from some other-
I appreciate that comment, thank you, Steve.
I really do believe and I thank this young lady, um, and I didn't really catch your name. Okay, Kritty, I appreciate that you stood there for, for twenty minutes. I, I do feel like you're qualified, I think, um, that the audit was done professionally, okay? Um, I didn't see anything that, uh, I thought, oh, that didn't sound good. Um, so I do want to acknowledge that. I think the whole team has, has been straightforward now that the audit is out, okay? Thomas, continuing with my comments, Thomas, it sounds to me like you're a very, um, reliable department head and I want to see that continue moving forward. And please, uh, remember my admonition that if you see anything in that, in your world of, of, um, parking that you think that needs to be brought to our attention, please do that, because- Because we need our department heads, um, to be engaged fully. And they are the first ones that should be able to determine if there's problems in their department, so... Um, I feel that the findings of, each finding is matched with a decent response, putting things into play that, uh, will change this. Some of them, some of the, those processes are, have already been put into place and are already making an impact. I would look forward to the nine to twelve month update. And I would like to ask city manager, how can we, uh, because in my mind, this is still pretty painful, how can we create a level of transparency so that council feels comfortable for the next nine to twelve months? Is there anything that council can have...
For this audit in particular, making sure the findings are implemented?
Say that again?
You mean for this audit in particular?
Yeah, for this audit in particular, for the nine to twelve months.
I think you, you trust your city manager being engaged, and making sure that we're meeting with the parking division manager often, and, and Thomas knows, I mean, it's, he's one of my favorite meetings of the, of the month, right?
Would you, would you allow, um, council members to set an appointment with you and Thomas in, in that timeframe?
I'm, I'm happy to meet with you all, absolutely, anytime.
Well, that builds a level of trust and transparency that I would be looking for. So, floor is yours.
Sure, sure, and we ought to be careful that, uh, there's not a quorum of this, uh, this, this particular committee in, uh, in those rooms, because I think you mentioned the last meeting we're subject to, Brown Act, uh, this particular committee is.
Definitely, so, we are the Brown Act members on this issue. So, we don't, we do not get to talk to our colleagues on, about this issue. Now, when this comes before council on Thursday, in front of the public, then we're able to express all of our opinions to all of our colleagues.
Sure, okay. Um, so I want to thank everybody here in the audience, uh, staff, for humoring me and answering, uh, questions. I'll have a, a lot less on, uh, uh, this coming Thursday, when we, we go to this again with the entire, uh, city council. Um, uh, you know, I, I use this word a lot up here on the dais, but, you know, the pro- the process has been a bit frustrating, uh, but I appreciate the, the level of transparency provided here today. Uh, I did have one last question I just thought about, you, you mentioned the word transparency, Steve. So, you mentioned that the, there was five other audits that are being juggled currently. Um, can we say what the, what those audits are regarding? Because we're the finance and audit committee, and I don't think that information has been provided to me, I don't, I don't know about the other two. Um, yeah, they have not provided that information either.
Um, it's fine with me, and I want to point out too, that some of the audits that they're doing are, come from the internal risk assessment that they do, and, and make recommendations on audits they should undertake. So, they, not all of them are directed by my office. So, Kriti?
Um, yeah, so we have, we had, uh, solid waste review, we did, uh, parking, we have done, um, Granite Park, of course. Um, we did, uh, one for PD, and now we're doing one, um, right now, as we speak, we're doing one for Public Works.
We've seen, this committee has seen, uh, the parking, uh, review, which we went over today, discussed thoroughly. We've seen Granite Park, everyone's seen Granite Park. Um, the other three, is there, uh, br- I mean, I'll, I'll keep my question on one.
So, the solid, the solid waste, uh, audit that we did, that was the first, our first audit, um, and that's up on the internal audit webpage, so you can take a look at the report there. Um, our PD report is currently under management response with, um, with the, with, um, with the PD. And then, um, right now, we've just started Public Works, I'm currently waiting for some documentation to start the field work.
Okay, on the, so, with Public Works, since it's just beginning, probably there's no timeline there. Is there a timeline of the PD audit?
Um, PD, I, uh, I should be receiving a response any day now, and then, um, I'll up, I'll update it accordingly, and then send it to Mike to review, and then, um, should be good to go for finalization.
Okay, so, in, in the latter steps of that process that you walked me through?
Yeah, we are in the latter steps of those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, let me ask you a quick question. So, on the police audit, what, specifically, what are you auditing when you, when you do the police department?
Uh, we're looking at payroll.
Specifically, when you say payroll, what do, what do you mean?
Um, we, should I give all the specifics, or I don't know the...
Any law or such that prevents, uh, us from talking about the...
Currently, it, it, it could potentially lead to a personnel, uh, action. And so, at this time, since the audit is not final, um, uh, we could, we should probably, uh, refrain from, from reviewing it right now, but certainly...
So, I'm not interested in getting the results right now, I'm just curious, specifically, when you say payroll, I know what payroll is.
I, I think, to, to piggyback off on what Jane said, I feel the more specific we get, the more, um, possible it could be for, for this personnel issue to be made public. And so, I think we just need to wait until the audit's done. I haven't seen it yet, I've had preliminary findings from the internal auditors, but I have not received it yet myself.
Well, council, these other audits are not on your agenda today, too. I think a quick question would be one thing, but it probably wouldn't be appropriate to dig into it.
Counselor, we don't meet often, so, uh, taking advantage of this timeframe in public to ask these questions, but, thank you.
Yeah, but, uh, Doug, the, the question, I'm not asking for specifics about the audit, I'm trying to understand what it is they're auditing when they say payroll. Is that, not an un- is that an unreasonable question to ask out here when it's not on our agenda?
Well, I think when it's not on the agenda, a quick question for context is one thing, yes.
Okay, so, uh...
A quick question's fine, but not digging into it.
Okay, well, that's, that's the question, I mean, I, I don't want to dig into it, but you said payroll, can you be a little bit more specific what, what you mean without getting into the personnel issues?
Yeah, they're, they're, um, they're auditing timesheets.
Okay, fine, great, got it. Um, the thing I want to say, uh, on, on this, I, I appreciate that you initiated this. I appreciate that we're doing these audits, these internal auditing. I mean, this is, this is exactly what I think we should be doing, and I think you're more than qualified, I think your report is excellent. I thought the Granite Park, uh, report, you, you outlined a lot of the issues that, that we all need to be aware of. So, I'm glad that you're here and doing this work, and I think it's very, very relevant, I think it's very important, I think it's protecting taxpayer money, I think it's assessing how taxpayer money is spent, and where there are blind spots, and those blind spots need to be corrected, and the recommendations are excellent. Having said all that wonderful stuff, I do however feel like ninety-eight thousand dollars from Club One Casino, when we're approving a, uh, deal with, uh, Club One to sell a Spiral Garage, which I would have supported anyway, and did support, I think the council should have known about that. I mean, that would have been something, um, city manager, that I would have liked to have known as we were approving, uh, the sale of that. I would have liked to have seen that get resolved as we were proceeding with the sale of that garage. And I, like, uh, council member Rando says, I would have probably supported it moving forward. I think it was a good deal, I think it's what we needed to do, that's why I supported it. But I would have liked to have known about this at the time, if you had that information for us to know. I think that, that's relevant, and, uh, so I would have liked to have known that. Having said that, um, I do appreciate that you initiated this audit, I think it's an excellent audit, and I think it's, it served the taxpayers well to know this information.
And I appreciate your comment, and that's a fair statement.
Okay. Wilma, um, one final question, because, so we've had two auditors, but it sounds like we've lost one to the fourth floor.
Right, so we, so Karen has graciously accepted a new position in Durham to oversee our HUD program, where Kelly Fertado was recently overseeing. And so, Kelly and Karen are working right now on that transition, but we are working closely with personnel to fit, fill Karen's position as soon as possible.
And, and two auditors, is what our city needs?
Um, I actually think we need a, a larger, uh, audit team, and so, perhaps with the bu- upcoming budget. Um, I've asked Mike to put a request in to add another auditor, but we'll take that with all of the other competing priorities.
Okay. Uh, question, um, so, with respect, there's roughly four hundred eighty-plus cities in California, how many of them do internal auditing, how many contract out? Or, I mean, i- is it standard practice to have the auditing unit internal?
Most of the big cities, and certainly the Big Eleven, all have their own audit, uh, sections or audit divisions or audit departments, all of them do. Uh, there are very few, perhaps some of the smaller cities, uh, certainly smaller than ours, might contract it out. Uh, but as a general rule, most of the, the, the internal audits are all done, um, in-house by, uh, by staff within, within the individual, um, municipal unit, and also for the counties as well.
Okay, thank you, and then, this is really my last, my last, uh, comment. Uh, so, you, you, you reminded me of that question, and then, council member Brettafield's comments, um, about, you know, how you would have liked to have known about the, uh, the ninety-eight thousand dollars plus, uh, that was lost and, and not collected from Club One. Um, I think that doubles into a larger conversation, even with the discuss this on council on Thursday. But going forward on these other, uh, three, one, two, no, two, sorry, two, that are currently being conducted, um, and are not completed yet, I think, uh, this is, I mean, to give us context, but we don't want to repeat the same mistake over and be making decisions with respect to Public Works and PD, uh, when we don't have the full scope of, uh, what might be going on. Uh, so we want to avoid compromising council decisions, uh, with lack of information that might, that may be available to us in the future.
Perfect. Now, normally, this body has the ability to make a rec- recommendation that this go to council, or that we feel like we've heard enough, it does not need to go all to council. However, this item is for sure going to council this Thursday, so that makes that point mute as to whether we make a recommendation or not. Um, I can't think of anything else we need...
I, I, we would like to know, though, um, for Thursday, what are you hoping to see? The, are the same type of presentation with Thomas here to answer questions?
What I think we'll do, although I didn't put it on the council agenda, I will ask, uh, the sponsor if our committee can make, uh, brief remarks, uh, prior to going to the rest of council. And then, I think we'll make similar remarks that we've made in the last, uh, fifteen minutes, our final remarks, and, and, and then, then it will definitely be open to, uh, our colleagues to make, uh, any other questions or comments that they...
So, we won't, we won't plan on making a presentation or answer questions unless asked, if that's fair enough?
But I, I would, I would guess that you should be ready to ask, yeah.
I, I figured as much, but...
Yeah.
We won't, we won't plan on it.
Yeah.
Until asked.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
What, what, was this meeting recorded, just like the council meetings on, uh, clerk act?
The audio is recorded, yes, but not a video.
Okay, just so it's available, uh, it's a public meeting, so it'd be available to our colleagues, if they're interested in hearing what happened here today.
Yes, if you just give me about tomorrow afternoon, it should be up on our website.
Sure, sure.
All right, I think we're going to, uh, end this meeting, then.
I think you need to open it up to, for, uh, public comment.
Oh, good point. Any members of the public like to address this item? All right, we're going to convene this, or we're going to, uh, dismiss this meeting, then, we're all done for the day.